Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting today for May twenty first of twenty twenty four. And with me today, I have Don Twinkler, then Plago, myself, Mike Steinis, our county supervisor, Lisa Smith, our county auditor. Bjorn is here with IT today, and Luann, our executive assistant, is working diligently in the background. And first on our agenda today is Todd Keeney, our Jackson County engineer, joined by Jayden Chekel, our assistant engineer. Good morning, gentlemen.
So I really only have one item that I get to hear. It's a working right-of-way permit for to bury a short section of electrical from an overhead pole on a private property of Forty Second Street. And I think it's not the utility company that's applying for this. It's either by a private citizen family, and I'm assuming they would hire a contractor to do the work. So it would be by our recommendation that the contractor that's going to be doing the work in the right-of-way sign the permit. Because they're the ones that actually would have to have the issue of the certificate of insurance, the ones that would physically be liable if there's damage in there.
Okay, so can we proceed with this?
Yeah, they just, it's just, I, we, I wouldn't want, right now, the applicant, his name is, is Doug Plago. But I think technically, if he, unless he's doing the work in the right-of-way, it should be the person that's doing it in the right-of-way, be the one that signs it.
And is it recommended for approval?
Yeah.
I will vacate the chair and second that motion.
You guys stand up for that. As long as I
I'm not giving up right there. We got a motion and a second to approve, permitted, permitted.
With the stipulation. Yeah, whoever's gonna do the work now, if they end up doing the work themselves, fine, but whoever's gonna physically be doing the work in the right-of-way should, should be the one that signs it.
With that stipulation. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Uh, real quick, I got someone, then Jayden was gonna give me an update too. So I did finally get a copy of that core permit from the CPKC, I think I forwarded it to you guys.
You did.
I still have not seen the agreement, and that's the one that I think really is the one that's gonna provide more information about what they're required to do when they close a crossing for longer than, what is it? Five minutes, ten minutes, something like that. It's, it's in the agreement, and that's a, that's a federal requirement. So I, we don't have a copy of that, and the core permit is just for the work they are doing for the site. So I don't think it really involves the Smiths Ferry Roadwork. So anyways, they did end up saying that to me, and I still haven't heard back anything about our request for a maintenance escrow account. So that's still, uh, we're still waiting response on that. So anyway, that's it.
So I also, did I read in there, I didn't see a permit from the DNR, Iowa DNR?
So the DNR, if you read in there, they, so they look at endangered species and that kind of thing. So they, they are listed in there, I think, as, uh, there's impact, but it's minimal impact for what they were gonna do. So, yeah, that's covered.
So as far as the access road, doesn't say anything about that yet? Actually called you on the day of the Sabbath for, to check out, uh, I had a report, I got pictures. Is there any damage? So, and not to be secretive, so I've got a call from a person that said that the railroad unloaded two large excavators without any highway paths on them and drove down three thirty, forty, forty. So I went up Sunday and looked, and there was visible tracks, so I called Jayden to check it out. All of them up with
I didn't, we talked about this earlier, did they have an over-sized right-of-way permit?
I might not, I haven't seen one. I can check with Stacy, I guess no.
So what we talked about, we're gonna obviously save the, uh, pictures and all that into the network drive. And then send them a letter, I think the first step, we would probably need to go out, meet with them, a rep, and look at the damage, and then come together on cost to repair, um, the damage, so.
So did have a report by the same individual that he heard of, he didn't see it, but he took pictures also on this. But he said that, uh, on three ninety fifth, just after, I think, the contract, I wasn't sure, I didn't look for close where that was.
The only thing I've seen is on three thirty, forty.
But there was some tracks on three ninety fifth, two just after.
Well, you can see where the, the grouser pads are breaking off the edge of the concrete. You can see like a corner break at forty-five degrees at the edge of pavement in the, the tool joint. So you can, and the cracks that are new or fresh are very tight and very sharp at the edges. So you can tell that they're new, new cracks.
Appreciate you checking that out.
Let me give a quick update on three oh eighth street. If the project is primarily done, the only items remaining are pavement markings, and they've run the smoothness report on it. But the road, they have a couple barricades there, but the road is essentially open to the local traffic in and out of there. I think it went well. I haven't really heard, I haven't had any comments on that road. I don't know if you three have, but I think it's been well received.
Not the, I mentioned, it looks great. I mean, the grading looks good, and, I mean, I have a question because I had called you about on personal driveway. Is there a decline from the hard surface road away from the road, a drainage? Now, I actually called the DOT also to make sure, because my contractor was a little nervous. And he said a four percent within, well, eight, that slopes away from the road.
So that's typically what, that's really what should, we should be requiring on our secondary road driving. So what that means is, so from the shoulder of the road, you continue to slope away. So any water that's on the main line drains from the shoulder, keeps draining away from the road. And then if you got a driveway, say you got a road, driveway comes down, and then a driveway goes up on the private property. You don't have a, a sheet flow of water coming down the driveway right onto the road. You have a, you have four percent where it bottoms out, and then it starts draining, right, you know, perpendicular into the ditch instead of shooting straight out.
So there is one driveway up there tonight. Little, I think they swirled it some just to get the running water to run on.
Yeah, I mean, it's tough when you got it.
Yeah, no doubt.
Goes up like that.
No doubt.
Then, uh, another construction update on Y sixty-one or two hundred and fiftieth avenue. Uh, contractor will be in tentatively next week to start doing the, uh, PCC patching on that road. And same time, Manass will be in two or three, setting up their plant that'll be at the Rockdale Flory. And they're planning right now to do asphalt work mid-June, so.
And we're talking three weeks, months? I don't remember the last
There's some concrete intersection work at Ivy sixty-two there that'll occur after the overlay is done. So, you know, it could take, I'd say maybe a month, half, two months.
So they are gonna do it that way?
Yeah. I, yeah.
So there'll be some, we've talked about this, so they're gonna, doing full with mainline new PCC paving at the intersection like Jayden said. So we had originally kind of designed it that that would happen first, and then we'd come in with our overlay, and we'd match right up to the elevation of the, that. They wanna do the asphalt first, so we, Jayden had talked to him and said, make sure. So what's gonna happen is they're gonna have new asphalt come up to the old existing PCC. They're gonna come in and replace the PCC, and then they're gonna have to replace some of the old asphalt, or excuse me, new asphalt to come to our new grade with the smooth transition. And that removal and new asphalt, where they're gonna basically repave it, is not gonna be a pay. So that's just them doing that, because that's how they wanna face the work, that's fine, but we're not paying twice for that work that's gonna
Is this DOT you're talking about?
No.
So, so explain to me why, I mean, do it, do they intend, do you know, do they intend to overlay from Andrew to Bellevue sixty-two? Or why would we cut after all these years?
Center lane.
Cuss rumble strips in the center lane at this time?
They're doing it everywhere. At sixty-four.
I mean, you can't hardly drive, I mean, it's
They grow, they ground, they ground it down five, six years ago, never replaced it.
Yeah, I, yet to see it on any of their lettings, and normally they're in correspondence with us, like for the side roads.
Yeah, yeah.
Fall time, so that's what they did on the, on the Coca, the half of sixty-two, so. I don't know, I haven't, I don't know when their plans are.
They, they probably got eight cent money to do like their network system, their, whatever their, was those, are those class-three roads, they call them, or CIN roads? So they probably got some safety money, cut centerline rumbles, and they did it like regional or district-wide kind of thing, would be my guess. Didn't matter how old
I mean, it's okay, didn't take them long, and I, I mean, it actually wakes you up, you know?
But They couldn't say overlay next year wasted effort.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, you know, I mean, the road obviously is gonna need attention.
Well, there must be a few years out before it gets attention.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I thought it was coming the year after it went from a Coca to up to Andrew.
Oh, I have for updates.
You have a meeting tomorrow morning?
Okay.
Appreciate it. Anything else, gentlemen, any questions for Todd or Jayden?
Do you want us, want or both of us here for the amendment, or?
No, I don't think so.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, I was gonna say, I was just about to ask our, our CTP.
Extension.
Is that on our agenda?
Yes, this was the old one.
I was just going without, I'm not even going in.
Did I miss something, or?
Our city of Pruska. They were looking for a grant extension through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, we gave them one already. Yes, we did.
What's your issues?
They have some sidewalk ADA compliance issues, and they're trying to work through that. But the DOT wouldn't approve the project until the the sidewalk ADA issues were addressed, so they're asking for another extension.
And this is from when, twenty-three, twenty, when were they awarded this project?
They were supposed to have it done in twenty-three, we gave them a year till twenty-four, now they're asking for another year till twenty-five.
And that's okay with everybody concerned? I mean, the payouts?
Yeah, so like, uh, I don't know how you guys do it, but I'm assuming you just keep this, do you keep an account for this or not?
Well, yeah, but the thing is, I mean, you have to put it back in next year's budget, too.
Well, it hasn't been spent, it rolls into next year's budget, right? Yeah.
Well, you gotta put it in, it doesn't roll in.
Well, it's like, yeah, I
So it's not in the twenty-five, but
Are they, uh, decided in the works to try to get
Yes, they're actively pursuing this, it's not like they're just not doing anything, they're trying to get this work done, it's just that the DOT is kind of holding it back until they get approval to rectify the ADA for the clients for their sidewalks. It's not like they're not trying to get it done.
So they're in the same fiscal year we're talking, so we extended it to six thirty of twenty-four. Obviously, that What's the wishes of the board?
I don't know, the only question, I got, I have no problem extending it, other than is there a timeframe, is there a limit to extensions?
I mean, you could, you could state in however you wanna do it, that this is the final extension, that there's no more, no more extensions will be created.
My promotion that we extend that one year was just being the final extension.
That we could, we'll communicate that to them, that they need to get it done.
I have motion and second to approve the one-year extension with a six thirty twenty-five sunset. As presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried. Now you want it to be done?
Okay, now I ask my other question that I asked before. So the budget amendment part, do we, do you guys typically hear for that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure if question, right, we need that, we'll find you.
What? I got no fun. We heard that. Were you there?
Absolutely.
In the afternoon?
Yeah.
Oh, I was in the morning. Yeah, you had a nicer day than
We did. Okay, moving forward. Uh, any visitors or citizens here to join us today that would like to address the board? Um, seeing none, hearing none, we'll move on to Mr. Metzback, the ECIA Community Economic and Development Director. And I believe Matt is with us on Zoom, sure, there he is. Good morning, Matt.
Morning, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Um, so the reason I'm here today is, uh, ECIA is looking to apply to HUD for a new grant. Um, it's called the Price Grant, it's to actually help rehab or replace mobile home trailers throughout our five counties. Um, again, we're targeting about replacing a hundred and maybe rehabbing about forty. Uh, anything older than nineteen seventy-six, we have to replace. Um, but just kind of coming to the board, looking for a letter of support, there is no local match on this grant, so it's a, it's a great opportunity that way. Um, but again, we, we like to show that we partner with our counties and, and our cities and our region, and, you know, they're, they're behind the applications, so. Um, we're looking at somewhere between a total price tag for this grant of about thirteen to fifteen million. I think approximately right now, we're at about fourteen to fifteen million, so we're probably gonna push that total ask up around fifteen. Um, it was originally due June fifth, we just got notification yesterday, it got pushed back till July tenth, so a little more time to get it in, but.
Is this for primary dwelling, or is this, is this for rental units, or what trailers?
Uh, can be, can be both.
But you have to qualify.
Correct, you do have to be low income to qualify.
Well, we got a couple spots to consider. I mean, it appears to be a win-win, is that, am I looking at it right here, there's no match, and, uh, um, the five counties can go together and, um, make it a better application?
Correct, I mean, because we're pulling some of the trader, trailer data, and I mean, I think we've got about thirty-five to forty percent of the trailers in the, in our region are older than nineteen eighty. So I mean, there, there's definitely a need.
And you said older than seventy-six, it's not an option to rehab, it's to replace?
Correct.
And?
I get, so if it's a rental, you, how do they qualify, the person, the renter or the landlord?
The, the renter would have to be income, income eligible.
Okay, and then the landlord takes possession?
I don't like that idea.
Correct, and we're trying to internally figure out a way to, you know, if, if we put some sort of covenants, if that's the right word on that. Similar to, similar to when we do like a, uh, a lead rental. You know, they're required to rent, they have to sign something that they're gonna try to rent to low-income in families, so.
Is there, what's the average life, do they have an average life of a trailer?
I, that I don't know, like I said, I'm surprised we're at thirty-five to forty percent of what we're seeing is older than forty years, you know?
You know, and I, that there'd be some isolated areas that up that number like that.
I guess my question is, if it's eligible for landlord rental type stuff, what if somebody has a, a, a trailer court, and all of their trailers qualify? I mean, I just, I have, I'm uncomfortable with federal funds, uh, basically replacing somebody's business for free. You know what I mean? And then they can kind of charge, um, under whoever exorbitant rents, because it's a brand-new trailer that, you know what I mean, it just
And, and Don, those are things we've talked about internally, it's just, like I said, we haven't worked out the exact details to to, to come up to with a great solution, I guess.
Yeah, so bottom line is, if we don't, um, if you don't, I should say, apply, there, obviously, we're not gonna get anything if we don't apply, so. Um, again, there has to be some kind of internal screening process to justify.
Correct, and like I said, that's kind of what we looked at with the lead program, you know, when we do rentals, because we don't wanna fix it up, and then the landlord have them, you know, boot out their current tenants, so again, we have, we do have them sign something, you know, that they will, they will continue to look for low income and then families to rent to, so.
According to Google, the average
So you've got this program in the past, or is this a new program?
It's, it's brand-new, brand-new for the country. I think HUD's starting to realize that affordable housing anymore, there just isn't a lot out there, and I think trailers are kind of the most affordable things yet, and, you know, they, they need help to get those repaired as well as houses in, like, mobile homes don't qualify for like our lead paint grant, they're, they're ineligible, so again, there just hasn't been really any program to help um, manufactured homes or trailer homes. So it's, it's brand-new from HUD.
And this is five counties, that, uh, that's, uh, going
Correct, correct.
And do you know, have they approved or supported?
Um, four out of five I've talked to and, and seem supportive. I've gotten letters back from two, so.
Yes, I, I guess I feel, you know, i- as an elected official, getting things fixed up and, and things in the county is a good thing, but as a private citizen, I'm really having a hard time. You know, nobody bought my house. You know, and if I'm running a rental business for trailers, and I can get the government to come through and replace all my old dilapidated trailers for brand-new ones for free. I mean, is there any restriction on how many in a, a trailer court can apply? I have a hard time with that.
I, I think, like I said, if we're targeting a hundred, we're gonna have to make sure we're equitable, equitable with all five of our counties. You know, to, to a degree, we, we're not setting it up like we did the lead one, where we're, we're saying we'll do so many houses per, per county. That was, we kind of had to do that with the match required, where this one with no match, we aren't. But again, I, I would like to and would plan to spread it around.
Yeah, obviously, I think we all agree, there has to be some internal screening or some kind of qualifications, um, be it to justify where it goes. That was our first question, is, is the landlords and whatnot.
And that's something, if it gets funded, may, maybe we do sit down with all five counties and go, you know, we can kind of put a little admin plan in place.
Yeah, I kind of wondered about looking at private homes first, and then if you don't meet your requirement.
You get a, a pri, like a priority list.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Primary dwelling.
Yeah.
Kind of thing. Owner, 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 primary dwellings. You know?
I guess I would make a motion to support, support this with trusting ECIA's religion on making sure it's
I mean, our county's always been great partners, and like I said, I, yeah, I wanna make sure you guys are, are happy with what we're doing, and if it gets funded, you know, we're doing what's best for everybody. But I, I totally agree with you, Don, it, it is from a, from a, you know, somebody who's running a business, yeah.
Those questions, it's up to you.
I would. I will vacate the chair and second the motion. So I have a motion and a second to approve the letter of support for the HUD Price Program Mobile Home, uh, Project. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed?
Alright.
Motion carried.
And that's purely on the questions, there's just, to me, there's just too many questions. And while we got you on the phone, when are we gonna officially reappoint people that we've been talking about for at least a year?
Yeah, I've got that out, the only one I, I need to hear back from is, uh, McCoke to the state, I will get that to you hopefully next week for approval.
Okay, and as we issue these revolving loans to people, do we ever get an update on status of these loans? Because, um, we, I, we issue the revolving loan, and we never really hear they're, they're, they're in the good, they're behind. You know, I did, is that ever issued or sent out, or, because to me, all we try to do is make sure there's money in the account, we approve people, we never hear anything back as to how the loans are doing. When do they twilight, you know, that kind of stuff.
Um, I can either, if you want a quarterly update, a six-month update, I'd be happy to come down and talk to you, or I can just give you something written, it's, it's whatever the board would want.
Uh, even just an email update, uh, just, uh, to let us know how they're doing, so we kind of get a, right now, we talk about the fund getting low. I can't tell you when things end, I can't tell you what, you know, I don't know the status of the loans, the ones that were approved before us. You know, to kind of see what the money's gonna do, and I, a quarterly email, or you know, you could come in every six months and do a verbal if you want, I don't care, I'd just like to know a little bit more about how things are going.
Okay, no, that is, that is, um, something I sure can do, and I will get you something, like I said, I look for something next month, or next week.
Maybe, maybe a suggestion would be to email us with information, if we got questions, we can have you come in or join us in the meeting, so. Uh, I say, I know one of the last ones we made was to Legacy Meets, and I, I was told the other day from one of the owners that they have, like, eight new full-time employees.
That's great.
So they're running overtime, undertime, and chipping out, so, good for them.
Now I will get that down to the board.
Appreciate it, man. Have a good day.
Have a good day, bye.
All right, so, um, next on our agenda is James Crocker. Um, is he being replaced, are you representing James?
Yep, I am.
So, uh, our deputy, our chief sheriff, here is Brett Kilburg. Good morning, Brett.
Morning.
And we have discussion on the twenty-eight year agreement with City of Mon.
Yeah, the City of Mon has turned their contract in for us to, uh, start doing the law enforcement out there. For the twenty-eight year agreement that we've been talking about and discussing. So, uh, basically, I just need your signatures on those.
And this contract is for those listening or whatever, this is satisfying a legal mandate from the state that towns that can't provide for their own law enforcement have to have a contract.
Yeah.
To, to prove they have coverage, and that's what these are.
Yeah, that's correct, I, Iowa code for a long time has said that you either need to have your own law enforcement, essentially a police department in your small town, or you have to have another means of providing that law enforcement coverage for that town through a twenty-eight-year, an agreement with your sheriff's office. Uh, we're just getting around to fulfilling those following code, fulfilling, uh, that arrangement with the twenty-eight year agreements.
So, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brett, but this has been going on for, I wanna say, six to eight months or even better? And your department have met with all these small communities and discussed and explained and
Yeah, we probably started discussions with them, yeah, I'd say, eight months ago at least, you know, maybe even a year ago. And, uh, kind of broke the news to them, and, um, kind of trying to come in at a very reasonable level, uh, compared to what other counties are doing, but, uh, just try to, uh, write that in, um, gently, I guess, to, uh, these small towns, because we know their, their funds are tight as well in areas, so. But this way, we're at least following the law and have something in writing to protect them and protect us and protect everyone involved, so.
And this is just covering law enforcement to the area?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Motion to approve.
I will second.
I have a motion and a second to approve, uh, the twenty-eight year agreement with the City of Mon for, uh, police protection as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried. Just one place, Brett?
I think there's three, oh, yeah.
How's everything else, update?
Uh, going well, we're busy, a lot of stuff going on, so, um, every day we inch closer to getting in the jails, so, kind of prepared for that. Yeah, just all kinds of stuff going on.
Have you guys really started looking at one weekend, looking at the East By Player building and trying to start separating that furniture out?
Have you guys really started looking at one weekend, looking at, uh, East by Player building and trying to start separating that furniture out? And, uh.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, uh, we'll take a look at that. I know you guys have talked to, uh, Billion and Grounds, uh, maintenance guy Jeff on that and stuff, so we gotta get him and get forward it. What's going on there, so.
It'd be nice if we could not have a favorable for June.
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
They might be looking at. Get rid of this, they really wanna.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good.
Well, appreciate it. Yep, yep, thanks. Have a good day.
Yep, you guys too.
Listen. Yeah, our county order.
Good morning. This morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of May fourteenth, twenty twenty four, board proceeding. As written by auditor Smith and then May fourteenth and then May sixteenth, twenty twenty four minutes, written by human resource director Becky Chavon and authorized publication of the official newspapers.
Motion and a second to approve the amendments as presented, um, and to authorize publication in the papers. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carry.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants and the publication of the claims listing in the amount of five hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and seven cents. So moved.
I have a motion and a second to approve the claims as presented, so five hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and seven cents. With the note that we have some large construction projects from the engineer side, uh, improvements, again, road improvements, uh, that we had to pay for. So we're again moving forward. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carry.
Motion needed to approve the chair signature on change order number one dash three to Builders Builders Inc. For six thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifteen cents for corner guards, labor, repaint and sidewalk repair.
Is that corner guards for the jail or?
He's put it in for the jail. I know that there's corner guards at the T W B, but I.
I was gonna say, they're not on yet, so.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Motion a second to approve the change order one, number one dash three as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carry.
Motion needed to approve the chair signature on change order four dash two to Geisler Brothers Company. For four thousand, nine hundred and one dollars and forty-six cents for equipment rental and fuel, dryer vents and duct sensors. Okay.
Motion second to approve the change order of number four dash two to Geisler Brothers as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carry.
Motion needed to approve invoices for twelve thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty cents to Midwest Construction Consultants. Ninety-eight thousand, forty-four dollars and forty cents to Builders Builders. Thirty-seven thousand, fifty dollars to Rock River Electric Inc. Five hundred and thirty-two dollars to Midwest Fire Sprinkler, two hundred and sixty dollars to Tri-State Porta Potty Inc. Ten thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-nine cents to S C I Communications Inc. One thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-six cents to Appliance Solutions. Three thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars to Gerardi Welding and Fabrication Inc. And two thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars to A T Disposal for a total of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. And authorize the chair signature on the project cost recap for the law enforcement center for the month ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the invoices, uh, as presented. And all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carry. We're coming to the end.
Yes. Motion needed to approve invoices for a hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty cents to Midwest Construction Consultants Inc. Twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty cents to Hometown Plumbing and Heating. Thirty thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents to Crawford Company. Three hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-five cents to McCoke Municipal Electric Utility. Ninety-five dollars and twenty-six cents to Black Hills Energy. Three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-six cents to Midwest Alarm Services. And nine hundred and fifty dollars to Gerardi Welding and Fabrication for a total of sixty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty cents. And authorize the chair signature on the project cost recap for the Jackson County Fair and ISU Extension. The four-H Outreach Center for the month ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Boom.
Second.
Motion second to approve the invoices for the four-H Outreach Center as presented. All those. Any further discussion?
Are we still paying the utilities on this? I mean, this is per April, right?
The Together We Build.
Yeah.
So.
Cause this, yesterday we had a Together We Build advisor meeting. And they were talking about the fairgrounds and Together We Build.
I was gonna say, the fairgrounds is paying a bill.
Paying utilities and the extension and Together We Build were talking about paying their utilities. And I just want to make sure it, it all paying the same utility, you know?
Can't answer that. I don't know.
I think we might need to look into the utility part of this.
Yeah, I mean, I just, this is what was given to me by John Hanson, so I.
I do know that the fairgrounds has paid two months of.
Mm-hmm. But some of that was split, wasn't it? What was split?
There's separate meter for extension side and.
Right, but if we're paying electric and energy and they're paying.
Well, I know there was talk yesterday about.
And ISU was paying electric and energy.
The fair, the Terry had utility bills to be paid. Uh, Amber was talking about they were paying utilities. And it just seemed, this, and that's just what I heard in that meeting and now here it seems like we're paying utilities. I mean, if we gotta pay them, that's right, but I just don't want. Everybody paying the same bill, so.
I can't answer any of them.
Okay.
Well, I would hope to think that, uh, utility getting paid locally and they would, um, advise if something was out of the ordinary.
I'm sure as they, I'm sure as they move from construction phase to done, no. But it will be, if you want to see, um, I do have that to be beside, so project cost recap, if you'd like to look at it.
I, I did have a motion and a second. Now we're on discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carry.
I will skip over item E on my agenda until after the budget hearing. So I also need a motion to approve resolution number ten thirty-five dash five, zero five dash twenty-one dash twenty twenty four. For the annual interfund operating transfer for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four in the sum of seventy-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. From the general basic fund, oh, one thousand to the local health sanitarian fund, twenty-four thousand, effective May twenty-first, twenty twenty four.
Uh, motion and a second to approve resolution number ten thirty-five dash zero five dash twenty-one dash twenty twenty four as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Aye opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve resolution number ten thirty-six dash zero five dash twenty-one dash twenty twenty four. For the annual interfund operating transfer for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. In the sum of seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars from the general basic fund, oh, one thousand. To the local public health nurses fund, twenty-four thousand, effective May twenty-first, twenty twenty four. I'll move.
Second.
Motion second to approve resolution number ten thirty-six dash zero five dash twenty-one dash twenty twenty four. As presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign, motion carried.
And all the items for the board right now.
Thank you. And Luann?
Good morning.
Good morning. Hey, I think the only thing I have for you today is the calendar. Uh, five o'clock tonight is a conservation board meeting at Prairie Creek Recreation Area, for any of you that want to go to that. I is guessing they might move that if the weather does, but it's supposed to do, but I haven't heard anything to date. Uh, six o'clock tonight is Jackson County Economic Alliance, um, it's a hybrid meeting for Don, and they are discussing whether or not they want to move this meeting completely to a different date. Wednesday, May twenty-second at one P M is a webinar on H F twenty-six seventy-three. For behavioral health, which its impact on the counties, and that's a Zoom webinar for any of you that would like to attend, and I do think you need to register if you want to go to that. Six o'clock Wednesday night, we have a possible closed session, um, for all of you. Thursday, May twenty-third at nine A M is an R P A meeting in Dubuque or by Zoom for Donna and Ninn. At one P M that afternoon is another possible closed session for all of you. Four P M on Thursday is an early childhood Iowa council meeting, Intuit or by Zoom for Ninn. And to add to your calendar, um, is a new meeting at five thirty on Thursday night for Mike, uh, who's now. Newly appointed member of the HACAP board, and that will be by Zoom unless he wants to go to Hiawatha.
Love to.
You go by five to get dinner, right?
Um, that's what we said. I, I met Jane here yesterday for a meeting and. Did you approve?
Japow.
Japow.
Yes, that was French.
I don't know. Wasn't sure I could be an asset to the board, but I agreed to give them, we get my feed in there anyway. I mean, we do have, they run the Head Start program here, so it's nice to know what's going on if we can and have a, say, a voice, if you will. Don't know how many trips I'll make to Hiawatha, but at least we can participate.
Uh, Friday, May twenty-fourth, um, at seven A M is a McCoke to the leadership meeting by Zoom for Don. And just so you know, I will be out of the office that day. Monday, May twenty-seventh, it is Memorial Day and the courthouse will be closed. It'll reopen again on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, and our next regular meeting will be that day at nine A M. That night at seven o'clock is a board of adjustment, um, meeting in the crew or by Zoom for any of you that want to go to that. And that's all I have for you.
All right, thank you. So, uh, we have a public hearing at ten. Uh, I don't see that Andrew is here yet. Uh, reports, uh, commission reports, I did a couple of things. We did have a municipal league meeting on, uh, Wednesday evening and, um, there was a report from Prime Stoppers on that, that there is a, um, um. Scenario going on in the county that there's some targeting going on to seniors, kind of a scam, if you will. Um, so I want them to be careful, just mostly call order things and, uh, you know, the whole money thing when they come to these scams things. So they're, they want people to be aware that, uh. There's, you know, be careful and, and advise your parents or loved ones if they're seniors to be careful about that kind of thing. Uh, there is from Jackson County Economic Alliance, we've all got the emails as far as the, uh, childcare survey. Um, and it is important to them, so I have forwarded on to, uh, daycare centers that I know in my local area. So if you know anybody. Even parents of children, uh, that are going through this, uh, you know, my, my own, my own children tell me what they're, what they're paying and how the. Things have changed for the summer and, uh, it doesn't matter if kids are there or not, they're paying, so. Um, that's the way things are, so it's, it's important, it's important information for them to gather and put together if people got time to fill out the survey. Um, if you can forward it on to somebody you think that would be representative of, of good talks and, or bad talks, either way. Um, yeah, otherwise we get, everybody gave a good report. We had a good meeting, uh, talked about the hospital a little bit, but. Um, E C I council meeting, excuse me. Uh, E C I council meeting we had last, uh, Wednesday. And the search is, is still out there for, uh, replacements, executive director, um, Shandra, you know, is interim. Um, working out fairly well, or working out really well, they claim, and, uh, talked to employees and such, and. Um, they are going to kind of hold off at this point till it's all stabilized a little more and then we're gonna get feelers out and, and start maybe late. Fall and then into spring, try to fill that position. And, uh, Matt, Matt had formed us of the presentation he just gave us. Uh, we did have a Destination Iowa meeting last Monday, was it this last Monday?
Yeah.
So things are proceeding there. We, we think, uh, we, Alex was there and, and we think we got all our permits from the D O T is kind of what we were waiting on because the wind bridge is in there right away. Um, the dirt work has been bid out and awarded. So that project looks like it's gonna be underway here yet. Hopefully this fall, starting and completing, uh, they've got.
Designer for the disco.
They've got designs for, I want to think he said thirty-six hole.
Yeah.
So, um, it's supposed to be a, supposed to be a big, big deal, big draw for, uh, people to come in, so. Hopefully they've got a place to stay and, and we can su- support anybody that comes in for that. It'll be nice to see that thing progressing a little bit. I know it's always, it's, it's nice to do it all at once, but there's always a funding available that comes into play. Uh, I don't know if there's anything else with, we might, the estimated cost on some of that, so there might be one. Over bridge, um, they're back in the back somewhere. I don't know that was, it's about, it might be eliminated and make some type of a rockway. You know, a rock crossing or something, but might not be ADA that crossing, I'm not sure. Um, just cost.
Cause I think past that, past that trail was not ADA compliant, so.
Right.
Pull a Prairie Creek down where the pavilion is, you gotta go up some stairs to get a separate.
Right. Yeah, so. They are concentrating on the ADA, on the other part of it, so.
I did have one other call from a gentleman about maybe some, uh, uses in the future of the park and such, but I think it's further discussion.
Uh, we, uh, water management authority we met, um, were unable to have an official meeting because we were lacking a forum. But we, uh, she applied and got her fifty thousand dollar cover crop grant, cover crop grant through the government. She's been getting the word out and we had her first applicant for that, so trying to help with that, so, uh. Things are running along, there's quite a few events coming up that they're gonna try to get to, and she was, um. The Gazette, if I'm not mistaken, wanted the, we're hosting an award for. Women in doing great things. There were sixty-five applicants and Erin, our coordinator, was one of the twelve. Selected, so she's going to be recognized on June thirteenth over at C Rapid, so that was a nice thing to hear. Her be recognized for all the efforts she's doing. Blinstone bless our C and D. Um, Michelle, she's really hit the ground running. She's got a lot of grants and a lot of feelers out to a lot of different people reconnecting and, uh. Uh, a lot of activity going on there, just looking to kind of help connect people with programs. Um, Together We Build, we're still working through some of the, uh. Nuances of the agreements and the arrangements and insurance and language and all that kind of stuff. They appreciate us. With getting the lease tweaked so they can get their insurance, um, you know, so they're working on finalizing that. They're getting the. Agreement set up between the, uh, the fair board. Um, they have had some rentals, but the big thing right now is a push to get the word out that the bill, billing is available. So they're looking at doing some advertising and stuff in the near future to let everybody know that, um, it's available and.
Just to add to that briefly, we did have our municipal league there and we got our first rental check for renting that space.
Not the first one, not the first one.
That's what Lanny said. She held it up. She said, this is our first check, so.
There you go.
And, uh, yeah, I see that, uh, I see that extension. We've, we've kind of toured the building a little bit just for the, uh, local mayors, I mean, the, you know, Jackson County mayors. And, uh, I see extension has moved in and they have a few things to place.
And she was excited that she's only used up half of the rolling storage, so she thought it would fill up rather quickly. They're, they're getting situated, they're getting steadily, um, it'll, it'll be nice. There's some. They've had some weddings, some birthdays, a couple of graduation parties, or not weddings, but birthday party, graduation party scheduled. Um, but, uh, things are getting going and all that. They still want to talk about the drainage issue with the water and the ponds and all that stuff, but, uh. You know, they're gonna try to figure that out here in a little bit, because when you get absorbed in a lot of rains, you do need to get a little bit of waterfront to the west of the building. But that's.
It is a really nice facility, yeah.
They do have an open house.
Though the fourteenth, the fourteenth from one to four was a ceremony, huh? June fourteenth. From one to four and at two o'clock there'll be a bit of a program, uh, kicking it off, so that'll be. That should be, I'm hoping that's in the paper, because they've been setting fires and all that stuff out for June fourteenth, yes. That'll be the official ribbon cutting, uh, celebration to, uh, open it.
Had some people coming from ISU.
And I did see that email from Amber. Wanted to know their ISU extension sign. It's, and they were wanting to know if they could fasten a couple of two-by-fours to the building. That way they could just screw the side into the two by fours.
About that again then. About possibly just putting it on both again, so. Because they got that sign and they'd have the T W B sign.
So again, I, I would want confirmation from the contractor or the, uh, I, I should maybe the contractor, the construction manager, that feasible or not feasible.
Well, and I showed like Amber, so our local store out here is doing a revamping and they took down their sign and it's very vis- visible on that building, what sign was up there just from the sun fading on, on the cement and stuff like that. So that's kind of my concern with, with attaching to the building is that you're gonna get that, so.
All things to consider, of course.
I met with Housing Trust Fund, had their meeting. Um, obviously if you're pursuing a new home or updating, there are some grants out there and your local banks have information on that and they do have a few out there that they're lacking people for.
In areas, certain areas?
Um.
I know they usually have that booked like a year or better in advance, you know, that, uh, they're usually filled up pretty quickly.
I know they were talking about getting some flyers to hand out at the banks or some funding that's available, so. Early childhood, we're working on their budget for the different daycares and supporting groups that, um, they support. So like the I Smiles program and stuff like that, so. Car seats, they had a little extra funding in their budget, so they upped some car seat funding with some of the different areas, so.
Appreciate it. Yeah, all good information. Uh, so we'll take a short recess at this time. We will reconvene our meeting at this time and we are scheduled to have a public hearing. So we will open a public hearing for fiscal year twenty twenty four budget amendment. And with us, uh, Shelley Hoy, our deputy assistant auditor is with us to explain a little bit.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um. The res- the amendment includes, um, the virtual training grants that they, that the sheriff has now, they've spent the money, they've received the money, so now we're putting it back in the budget. Um. The additional hazmat, uh, emergency management assessment, um, it inc- had increased from the time that we had budgeted for it, so, um, that's included. The general assistance funeral services that needed to be increased. Um, ECIA and, uh, our P, ECIA, RPA dues having, have, uh, increased. Um, there was a pass through for the Andrew Cemetery for Community Foundation Grant. That's included, uh, when moved. Uh, now that's annual auto insurance increase for the secondary roads was increased by thirty thousand. And then, um, road patching and parts was increased a hundred and ninety thousand. And and secondary road bridges and three hundred and eighth street paving project, we put that in the budget for three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Total amendment is six hundred and eighty six thousand, three hundred and eighty eight dollars.
Are there any more, is there anyone online or in the presence that would like to have any questions for Shelley? Anyone else?
A bit of feedback or anything.
I have not received any either on the publication side.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion in second to close a public hearing. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
That being said, I need to, I'm, I need a motion to approve resolution number ten thirty four dash zero five dash twenty one dash twenty twenty four for the amendment to the county budget for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four and authorize chair and auditor signatures on the record of hearing and certify to the state of Iowa. Second thought.
I have a motion in a second to approve resolution ten thirty four dash zero five dash twenty one dash twenty twenty four as presented, presented and have the chair, say the chair and certify to the state of Iowa. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
And now that's all that I have for the board today.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Shelley, for your work.
Thank you. Just to clarify, this is an increase, an, an increase to this year's budget of the six hundred and eighty six.
Yes.
For our agents. Yep, yep.
Okay, so we had our public hearing. Uh, we had discussion on the budget amendments. We have next on our agenda, Mr. Andrew Long, our Jackson County Jail Administrator. Or Department Update. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Good.
Going on a full lot. Just wanted to keep you guys apprised of a few things. Um, terms of the new jail, went to Walmart, worked on the TVs, the TV mounts, um. Hanson said to get an invoice from them and he'll present that to you guys, I guess, with his other things. So that's done, thank you, uh, within the cells. Yep, so that'd be, would be watch. So.
Each cell?
Yep, yeah, there's one each cell. Now individual cells, cell blocks, the pods. So there'd be a total of six TVs. Um, one for each of the four pods and then one for each of the two special status cells. Um, so Hanson is gonna present that stuff with his other, um.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
What, what else is he gonna present? So TVs and what else? I mean, like.
Just whatever, his pay apps.
So these TVs are gonna be a part of the construction cost?
The way he talked, yes.
Okay.
He said that usually just goes in with the, the others, so.
I mean, again, I, 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 from day one, I, I, this thing was supposed to be turnkey, so that's part of the operation to pacify, if you will, or what it may be. I, I, it should be part of his baby.
So I think he'll present all that, uh, whatever his next step is, he needs to talk to you guys about. Um, we had a very costly weekend this weekend. Um, Thursday night, we had an arrest, um, inter Jackson care resident, female, um, lots and lots of medical issues, um, lots of mental health issues, suicidal and assaultive. Um, so we've always shipped out females when they're called after court. Dubuque was willing to take her. Um, we tried others, actually including Lynn, Polk and Scott, um, being bigger with medical and they all said no, they would not deal with her. Dubuque took her for about six hours, called, said, pick her up, bring her back. Um, so for the first time in decades, we ended up holding a female in one of our cells. Um, and that resulted in us having to ship out all the males that were in that cell. Um, to the tune of about sixty bucks a day. Um, their numbers are high anyway right now, so we were at seventeen yesterday. Down to fourteen today, so quite a few of them that were shipped out over the weekend. Um, females now out of custody. Uh, we had a couple of ambulance calls with their, uh, multiple bouts of the restraining chair with their, um, spit all over me. We had another correction officer assaulted a couple of times, so. She was a lot of fun. Um, so anyway, she's gone now, but quite a bit of cost associated, obviously, having to house out due to that. Uh, I never thought we'd be housing a female in our current jail, but we reached it. Um, so we have that going on. Um, like I said, it's been resolved now. Hopefully that stays resolved. Um, otherwise, not a full lot we have going on. Like I said, the fact that our numbers are, are high, we're at fourteen. Um, again, directly, we're full at eight, so we have, uh, five shipped out currently. Uh, we have another one that's awaiting extradition over in Illinois on probation violation, so he'll be staying with us once we have him. And also put out a couple of warrants for misdemeanesses, serving jail time that didn't show up, so. Our numbers are, uh, getting back up there, so hopefully we get a new jail soon where we can house these people ourselves and.
Does he give you an idea when we're getting in the jail that we're supposed to be in in February?
Yeah, that's just it. So he, the last he told me was he's hoping to be in there and training the third week of June. Um, I was there yesterday. It is undoubtedly coming along. Um, told me the kitchen equipment is in except for three basting, um. I saw they laid the epoxy down in the kitchen, so hopefully they'll be installing that stuff soon. We went through replacement of the tables in the cells, uh, where those should be placed at. Um, he had ordered ones for the medium max yet, but the tables are laid for, secure to the floor for the gen pop. Uh, looks like almost all of the toilet fixtures are in and the bunks are all installed except for special status, so. I think we gotta be getting close, I'd hope anyway, so. The security electronics people, I think he said, are coming in the near future and they were estimating three weeks. I met with them here back in December. I'm optimistic about them. They seem like a pretty good company, pretty up to date. Um, I've heard complaints from people on other companies, I think Delaware, that they weren't real thrilled with who they had for, uh, security electronics. Uh, I think this is the first time Hanson's worked with this one, the Katarbit, but like I said, for meeting with them back in December, I'm pretty optimistic about them, so. It's a typical six to eight weeks for security electronics. These guys are estimating three, so. Like I said, I'm, I'm optimistic about them and hopefully, hopefully that's the, that last major project to get done in here from what I'm understanding anyway. Getting there.
Well, we'd like to hear progression anyway. Hopefully that is, comes to permission. Um, I guess I had a question, you know, as far as, uh, individual coming from the Andrew Jackson Care. I, I know that imagine as contracted or, uh, or agreed to take these individuals in, are they not responsible any sort of figure way for their behavior or, um, responsible for
Well.
financially when they agree to take them in?
Financially, once they're in jail, not to my knowledge, um. A- a- and we've had talks with Andrew Jackson regarding the, the people that, you know, jail isn't appropriate setting for them either. Um, so we've had this conversation where, you know, you need to take people that you can handle. And I had that conversation with McKinnon Friday regarding this female. It's, hey, we can't continue to have her in and out of jail. There's medical issues, there's mental issues and we're not fit for that. So hopefully they will, uh, either seek an appropriate placement or come up with an alternative solution there.
Yeah, some of that, um, and we probably need to have a conversation with them again, is that some of that just goes with the territory based on the job you have and what you're doing in the facility.
When a call comes out, it's, it's emergency, if you will, or whatever it may be, response or response, you need to respond anyway, but I'm just wondering what their contract says when they take them in. Are they responsible for these people?
Well, they would be while they're in their facility. They wouldn't be while they're in, you know, our jail, it'd be no different than the hospital, so maybe it comes from our, or comes from the hospital to our jail or something like that. Um, I think we need to revisit that again and even maybe have a little training internally in the department to, in my opinion, that if someone has a, so what it was, was a simple simple misdemeanor or something that you could write a ticket for and hand somebody the ticket and say, go to court on this date. Um, just like we did with another guy recently that was, we'd brought him to jail, it would cause a whole lot of problems and we would have to run somewhere the next morning and bring him back to court and the judge might have just dismissed the charges anyway. So rather than haul him to jail, we just wrote him citations, said, go to court on this date and there you are. Uh, anything that's a simple mis- misdemeanor below can have a traffic or a criminal citation written for it.
Well, there's not a danger to society or the community.
Right, right. There's factors we take into consideration for that. So in this case, I think we probably could have given her the ticket, been like, there you go. If somebody wants to follow through, it'd be the complaint on this and be the victim later on in court. They can do that. Go to court on this date. See you later. So, um, would have saved us a whole lot of trouble in jail, so.
A- a- another component to that too, with the Andrew Jackson care that makes it difficult. So i- in the jail standards, in code, it says that if a person is arrested and that person is believed to have mental illness, which typically why they're in Jackson. And it's a simple misdemeanor and there's reason to believe that that person can be a danger to themselves or others based on the mental illness. That a commitment process should be attempted. Well, what becomes difficult there is they're usually in Andrew Jackson care by court order. So where do we go from there? That's where it's, we need to work on Andrew Jackson care, finding an appropriate placement rather than jail because they're in there due to those issues. So that's where.
Well, that's not the place. That makes it worse.
Well, and the time and resources to basically run a committal process on somebody to commit them back to where they were committed. It's like they were already committed there. So it's just, gotta get some people to understand how this is gonna work and.
Is that on our end or is that on?
Probably both.
Andrew Jackson's.
Yeah, probably both, um, you know.
They also have to have channels of communication within their network. When they accept these people, if they start getting bulging or whatever, this is where they go. They can't just be incarcerated.
Yeah. Yeah, and so as the officer, if I take this person before a judge, and this has happened before. You take this person before the judge, say, Andrew's got mental issues and he's assaulted someone. And the judge looks at the officer and says, how can they have the intent to assault someone when they don't, they're not even in the right frame of mind. You're exactly right, Your Honor. So, I just get dropped because you know, it's kind of like working in the jail, being a police officer. If you're just flailing around and somebody hits you in the process of struggling with someone, did they really assault you? You know what I mean? It kind of comes with the territory. You know, now if somebody flat out assaults you, that's different. Um, like she was spitting in their faces and, and all kinds of nasty stuff like that. But we don't become the holding ground for a facility that's supposed to be taking care of these issues. You know, we don't, we don't become the the place where they get a break for a weekend by sending her to jail and then she's just gonna go right back there anyway. And the charges are probably gonna go away anyways.
So does the officer responding make that decision as far as the citation, uh, on your way or?
They could, or they could call a supervisor or something. In this case, um, it was a younger officer that handled this situation and not that he did anything wrong. He did everything according to what he knows he should do. However, again, like I say, there's times where if it's a simple misdemeanor, I'll just find somebody a ticket and be like, because why should the county taxpayers pay somebody, pay for somebody to sit in jail for a simple misdemeanor, get three meals a day and sit in jail and just tie up our jail. Right, right. General, simple, generally, simple misdemeanors are not anything where the public's in danger or has to be in any fear of any alarm or anything that fits. Somebody stole something worth a certain amount of money, you know what I mean? Does that person need to go to jail? So they write them a ticket and move on. You know, things like that. When it becomes serious misdemeanors and above, the state law says they have to be fingerprinted, so then they have to at least come into the jail to get fingerprinted. And generally then they get held in jail if it's a serious, and not even always in those cases either, because if it's a driving charge, you know, they're driving under suspension or whatever, serious misdemeanor, get your fingerprint on it. See you later. Don't drive. Or we'll charge you again, you know. So it's just things we have to take into consideration, especially with the jail situation we're in now. And like I said, I don't always believe in the county taxpayers paying for three meals a day on somebody to sit in there on something that's not anything that they need to be tying up uh, finances or resources of counting.
Okay, what else, Andrew? Anything else? Or we're prepared or we're gearing up for
We're gearing up.
At some point, opening up.
Get your list of what we need to be purchasing. Where do we stand on that?
I'm getting there. I was gonna reach out to Jail Supply Company, a different one last week, and that was Thursday, we ended up with this female and I, I just didn't get a chance to follow up on it. That continued into yesterday, so. Um, hopefully by this Friday, I have to be emailed out to you guys in terms of.
A little different animal, that's for sure, but hopefully it's, uh, I guess the, uh, facility itself get a nice, better working condition and hopefully we, it can work out.
Sure.
Chip out the rest of everybody else because, yeah, nobody was gonna deal with that. And that's where in the new jail again too, that special status cell is the answer to that. Since we're not there, you know, so.
Yeah.
It's, uh, you know, yeah, it's gonna ship out all those males, but, um, ultimately it worked out alright. Um, it's a long weekend.
I'm gonna keep everybody safe, that's for sure, so. Appreciate it and again, we appreciate what you do and keep up.
Even check with the jail inspector, the state jail inspector, to see if for a day or two, if we couldn't crowd everybody into one cell, lay their mats on the floor and they can sleep in there, but then it becomes a square footage. Spatial issue.
So we gotta do a price of it all, so.
Well, all right. Well, thank you very much. Yeah, have a good week, guys. Okay, I think we've went over our other, uh, commission reports and I don't have anything else on my agenda. Anyone else have any unfinished business?
The only thing, I sent an email out, just asking, we need to figure out something with that cyber insurance. One way or the other, that's kind of just hanging out there, so.
We, I thought we approved the little bit of.
I think.
I think you asked for Jennifer to see if the
if you could do.
If it could come back to May first instead of having annual renewal. So it was a shorter term policy instead of a full year to, so it would coincide with our other renewal. And she sent you several emails, you know, looking for some direction. So that's what she's wanting again, is what do you want to do?
So, and if I'm not mistaken, she wasn't able to get it to coincide, correct?
Yeah, it was May first.
And I thought we approved that.
Say, let's just get it on next week's agenda and make sure we officially.
Say it was that and your deductible.
Yeah, there's two quotes in there.
Yeah. Fifteen and a thirty.
I think she was going to ask if she could ask her people if they could keep that, did this thing stay fifteen?
Yeah, make sure it's on their, somebody's agenda and finish that up. What was good for the year?
Put it in the agenda, otherwise, motion adjourned.
Uh, motion in a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, meeting adjourned. Thank you.